Hello, everyone. We're back again today. And yes, I have come back from my vacation. Thank you. We went to Pennsylvania and it was great. I hope all of you are again ready to go on vacation or coming back from vacation because you know, when the kids are not in school, this is what you want to do. But today I have a special guest Haley Ross. How you doing Haley?
I'm great. Thank you for having me.
Okay, and you are running for the school board?
Yes, District Three.
District Three. Who was in there before, if I may ask?
Lucia Baez Geller and she's
Running for another
She's running for another position.
All right, Haley, quickly tell us a little bit about yourself so the audience knows who you are.
Okay, well, I was an educator for almost thirty years. I'm a mom, am a child advocate. I'm married to the same person for forty-three years.
Wow.
So I've lived in Miami for forty-five years and it's it's my passion. Education is my passion.
Okay, so what made you want to run for office?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't really know at this point. No. It was the right time because I I was already retired and then I had always wanted to do this. You really, I don't think you can do it if you have a full-time job, especially one like teaching. And so when I retired, there were some issues in my family with health and so that had to be delayed. But thank God, everybody's fine right now. And so everything just aligned. I didn't even realize that she wasn't gonna run. I'm now on Miami Beach, so it was perfect. It was the right time.
May I ask, how's that camp? How do you feel in the campaign? Because I believe right now a lot of people have gotten early early vote ballots at home?
Yes, yes, we all got them through the mail already if we're gonna vote by mail.
Yes.
I think it's going well. I've got, I'm out there all the time. I'm meeting people. I'm I'm talking to people. And putting myself out there. So I think it's going well.
Knocking on the doors?
Have been knocking on doors.
Chasing chasing the A B's because I know I know the lingo. Chase the A B's and make the calls and stuff like that.
Exactly. So it is a learning curve when this is the first thing I've run for. And so you I have learned so much, it's unbelievable. And and you know, so we're we're moving along. We I've got a very good and supportive group of people with me.
Oh, that's good. That's good.
Yes.
So for the audience, make sure that if you already have your A B ballot, make sure you sign it and date it because they can get returned for that reason and not and not approved. If you haven't gotten it yet, check on to see when it's gonna get there because I know the mail sometimes is a little slow. But it's important that we make sure that we get those ballots at home, fill them out and we send them out as fast as possible. So Haley, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Two weeks ago, I had two students here and one of the things we were talking about was school safety and the drills that they that they have for, I mean, I didn't say specifically school shooters
Yes.
To the students, but but they knew what I was talking about. It was amazing. And one of the things that they said is that the junior, she said that the the kind of the curriculum to for the safety is she thinks is a good. She said where it where it falls, where it fails at is that the students themselves take it as a joke or they horse around or they don't listen. Not all of them, but you know, you know, some of them.
Right.
And she says that's where she thinks that that program will need help. Have you heard anything about that?
Yes, I've heard a lot about school safety. Did you know that the Secret Service will come and set up a program for you for free?
No, I did not know that.
Yeah, I learned that through doing all this stuff for the school board because I feel that if you're not safe at school, you cannot learn. You know, and if you're not safe at school, you cannot teach either. So our teachers and our students need to feel that like we felt when we were younger. Those things never crossed our minds. So it's our responsibility to buffer them from that. So that they can continue with their their childhood or their, you know, preteen, whatever. Education is what's key. They shouldn't have that on their minds. But I think the not taking it seriously is a big problem. And I think because we have found out that many kids have known about a shooter previously and have not told a parent or, you know, so there have to be conversations and they're hard conversations to have. You know, they they should happen at home, but we know how things are with kids. It's really hard. But that has to be an ongoing, open thing and it's a difficult process because how do we help them to maintain not just their innocence, but their lessen their anxiety? We don't want our kids growing up anxious because of this, but we need to make them aware. So knowledge is power, you know, so we have to talk to them in an age-appropriate way of how to stay safe. And not just from, you know, a shooter. There's a lot of things.
No, and and one thing you you said earlier about buffering them. I can't see it difficult, especially because of the social media because I mean, you're, you know, and and all my children are grown adults, thank God, and I got two grandkids. But it's it's a little different between grandkids and your own kids because, you know, my daughter has to deal with them in school mostly more than I do. But when I see, when I talk to my grandson and he's talking about YouTube and TikTok and Instagram, which are the three most famous because he told me Facebook kind of fading away.
For old people.
Right, that's what he told me. So it's Instagram, TikTok and YouTube. When you have some misinformation on there.
Right.
You know, it's hard to buffer them from now or pretend that because, I mean, you know, you can't constantly be watching them what they're watching. Because kids are smart. They know how to change screens real fast on you, you know, if they wanted to do that.
Right.
You know, so kids are kids will be kids.
Right.
So it's, you know, what do you think we can do about that? What can we do about that?
Yeah, actually, I'm looking into a program. It's called Wait Until Eighth. Because why does a third grader need a cellphone with them? I I mean, I I don't think there's a need. So Wait Until Eighth is a pledge that you take to not give your kids a phone until eighth grade. Or take them away in the classroom. I think that they can be taken away in the classroom, you know, managed in some fashion.
Right.
And you, there are phones that you can have for your kids that they're just allowed to call you, Grandma and Grandpa, you know, nine-one-one, and that's it.
But but aren't we pushing our children and we because I I believe the it takes a village to raise a kid, so I believe we're all involved.
Yeah.
But are we pushing our children to go on in there? Like, because I see a lot of things are online now. You got to study online. If you miss homework or something, you gotta go back online. So we're kind of pushing them to go online anyway.
Yeah, we do push them to go online.
If you want to take the phones, you know, no, wait to eight. You know, like what are six, seven, eighth graders gonna do if they can't go online? Because it's not just the phone. I mean, it's the whole computer.
Yeah, I know. I, this is just personally me. A computer belongs in a family area where mom and dad know what you're looking at, you know? And I don't, parents have to be responsible for that. You can put restrictions on computers. And some things they're not ready for. We know that you can find anything online.
Right.
And they will, they will. So you do have to have monitors and you do have to have restrictions on it because that's the world we live in today. You have to know who they're communicating with too.
No, exactly. But also, and no, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know.
I know you agree with me.
Like my daughter, she works from home. Okay, and she told me, she goes, Dad, you know, now in the summer, they could drive me crazy because she has to work from home. And then if, you know, my grandson's on the computer or on the phone and my granddaughter is also watching Cocoh Mellon, she can't really work.
No, it's hard.
I mean, so it's, you know, I'm glad I didn't have that problem with my children. So, you know, I I think the parents have it a lot harder now when it comes to school.
I agree with you.
Sometimes, you know, sometimes the easier things makes it harder in other ways.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, so your election is now in August.
Yes.
If there's no runoff, it stays that way or is how does that work?
Well,
Do you go to November?
If you have to have fifty percent plus one.
Plus one, okay.
And if not, then it's a runoff in November.
Okay, so let's, let's say you win. What's one of the first things that you want to do when you get to office?
Okay, well, there are so many things. I think whatever program we put into place for anything, it requires money, right? But I think it's a very large budget that we already have and I'd like to know where all that money's going. So I have already reached out to an auditing company.
Right.
Because I don't want somebody here in Miami to tell me what's going on. I want somebody externally to tell me this is, you know, this, I think there's waste happening. You know, especially when you have such a huge budget and such a huge area. We're a really big county. We're the third largest school district in the country.
Yeah.
Okay, but there are so many things. I I think we have to increase our academic rigor. Because I think kids are falling behind. They're they're ahead in other ways, like you're saying, you know, your your three-year-old granddaughter can tell you how to use the phone in ways that you you weren't aware it did it. So that's very advanced. But then they're falling behind in other ways. Like I noticed vocabulary with kids and it's not what it should be. And I want our kids to be able to compete globally. Our kids should be on level. They can go anywhere. And when I I like to travel a lot and when I go travel and and see the kids are, their school days are longer and some places they go to school an extra day. Parents are paying for two hours of tutoring. They're really invested in education because as we know, that education's the only way to get ahead. You know, that's truly the only way to get ahead. So our kids need to be able to compete with everyone. And that's really my my big thing. I think we need to have greater academic rigor and they need stamina. Now, the average attention spans like nine seconds, something like, I just read that somewhere. And how can that be? How are we gonna have, you know, astronauts and brain scientists?
You're giving them potential more than nine seconds.
Exactly. I bet I hope the operation happens fast, you know, but so we need to do that. And I think it needs to be done in a spirit of joy because that also kills me. I I can tell you as a teacher, I loved every day of my job, every day. I used to wake up and say, I'm one of the luckiest people on the planet because I get to do what I love. And I don't want to think about somebody going to school and being miserable. That should be a joyful time. That we only have them for a very little period of time when you think about it. So we have to give them that joy of learning that should be a lifelong thing. Everybody should, you know, that should be something you carry with you. To to love to read, to be excited, to be curious. I don't want to remove that from anybody. I want to enhance that and grow that so that, you know, you take them for the first step and move them along until they take it themselves and then they they just run with that. So.
Yeah, I I agree. I think critical thinking is one of the things that we're losing in in our kids nowadays because everything's so easy, you know, you don't have to look for anything. You just ask the phone. You know, Google, tell me this and it tells you. So you no longer, like when I, I remember when we had to do book reports and we, I mean, it was a book report.
It was.
Now it's it's totally different. Now, I mean, you can get anything, anything, you know, Britannica's gone out of business a long time ago.
They're dead. Now they're online somewhere too, but unnecessary. And now everybody's chat GPT-ing everything. So, you know, the kids are gonna put in there, please write me a five-page report on blah, blah, blah. So, you know, we'll have to keep an eye on that too. But
Maybe I can use that too.
Maybe I should use it too.
Okay, all right. Let's talk a little about policy. Is there any policy that you don't agree with right now that's that's been instituted? Because I mean, and and not to point your fingers, but the governor has changed some things, the school board has changed some things. And I think there's a a fight back and forth between the local and the state. When, in my opinion, and you know, I'm I'm no educator. I think we should leave it to the to the local because whatever happens in Dade County is different than what might be happening up in in St. Lucia County or in the Panhandle. So I I don't think the state should get involved in local schools. I think they should stay out of it and let the school board members who live in that district
Right.
Do deal with it. How do you feel about?
Right.
Policy on that?
And our district is so huge that one area of our district is completely different from another area. So even that we have to take into account. The money does come from Tallahassee. I mean, it's our money and that's the way it works. From here to Tallahassee and then it gets portioned out.
Right.
I I don't have some problems with some of the things that the governor has done right now. One of the things that I believe is that educators need to get paid more. We live in a very expensive city. And they cannot afford to live here. Every teacher I've always known has had two jobs just to be able to live here and it's just gotten worse. So we have teachers that are leaving. We have to attract new teachers. And how can we attract them when, you know, okay, it costs just as much to live here as it does to live in New York, but New York teacher pay is twice as much.
Right.
You know, and so that's one of the policies that I think is okay. They just had a huge teacher increase in pay. I think that's fine. I think I think, for example, I'm not a book baner at all. I do not believe any book should be banned. You know, I think that everything should be age-appropriate. So I'm not going to give a fourth grader War and Peace and Here, Go Read This because their lack of comprehension of that, it's not where it should be. So I don't think anything should be banned, but I do think it should be age-appropriate.
And and I believe we already have that. When you elaborate, everything is segmented by age and topics as it is now.
Yes, yes. I mean, there's nothing to stop them, I guess, but I think, you know, I think a lot is put off on the school system where I think parents need to be more involved. It's just statistics. Parents who are involved, the kids are more successful. So we need to engage parents and bring them in to make them aware of of what their child needs from them sometimes. Maybe not every parent knows.
Being you bring up the 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 teacher salary, I got two things on that. One, yes, they they did get a a raise, but and my and I and I have friends that are teachers and my sister is a teacher, so I hear from her all the time. And and if I want to ask this question, she's gonna pull my ear later if I don't ask her.
Please ask.
One of them is, you know, by the time that they actually institute that raise, it takes a while. So I mean, you know, it it's, by the time they get the raise, she tells me, by the time I get the raise, everything's already gone up again.
Right.
So it's like they even get it. And the second thing is, she tells me that, why is it that the that they're giving, let's say, incentives on new teachers coming in that are making the same thing that a ten-year, a ten-year, ten-year teacher is making?
Trust me.
And that's upsetting them.
Right, there's a lot of
How do we fix that?
We have to increase teacher pay even more. I really think it's too little, too late. Because we have been promised so far along, you know, oh, when things get better, when, well, our economy down here has been doing great. And that's not translated into teacher pay at all. And as as a tenured teacher, I can tell you it was very, one year, one of my raises for the whole year, not a month or a week, for the whole year was twelve dollars. Yeah, you can laugh, but remember this too. So this is, that's why I'm like, I'm not just about bringing in new talent. I want to keep that veteran teacher because they walk the walk.
Yeah.
Okay, so we want to keep them here. So those pay raises have to translate to the twenty-year, twenty-five, thirty-year teacher. So, yeah, we have to increase it even more.
Now, and I believe that a lot of funding has been cut, especially for schools, for studies, arts and and music programs. So a lot of that didn't get funded from from by the state legislature, let's say, I'm not gonna mention any names, but that's that's gonna hurt this year.
That's very unfortunate because not everybody's forte is chemistry, okay?
Right.
So we need to have, and I think there should be more programs, not shop per se, but we need right now, if you know how to fix an air conditioner, you are king in Miami, okay? So why don't we have tech classes where we have our children learn that? Or, you know, we need welders, we need plumbers, we need programs for that. We need for them to shine. We also need music programs. We need art programs, you know? There's a link between math and music. So they should just go hand in hand. I don't see why they have to be excluded from anything.
No, I agree with you. I mean, I love math. In fact, when I was when I was young, I wanted to be a math teacher.
I love that.
You know, instead I went to the service and, you know, got into electronics. So I'm an electrician.
Oh, okay, see?
I'm a licensed electrician.
There you go. So you know the need for electricians.
Yes, and I, in fact, in New York, where I grew up, I went to a vocational school, so we had shop classes, woodworking, machine shop. I don't see that here anymore.
No.
And and I think it's something that we should run because, like you said, not everybody, not everybody destined to go to college right away. I didn't go to college after until I was like thirty-five, forty years old.
Right, when you were ready.
Yeah, because after high school, I went to the service.
Right.
So, you know, we should have programs and, I mean, I'll be honest, as an electrician, and I've done very well for myself. I mean, my son went to law school, so, you know, I do okay.
Very proud, yes.
Yes, I am, I am, I am. In fact, if I don't bring this up, I know last time my son, my youngest son, who works for my company, said that, why don't I never mention him? So Christopher, I'm mentioning you now.
Shout out for you.
You're out there working so I can be here today. You're out there pulling the wire. Thank you so much, Christopher. I love you. My my youngest, but yeah, you know, you know, we need a lot of fixing, but unfortunately with the fixing, we need the money. If we don't get the funding, we can't do nothing.
Right.
We can have all these great ideas.
Yeah, and I under, and that's great and that we do need funding and there is money and I know there's money. But the other thing too, I also worked in Catholic school. That's when I, when I started teaching, I taught in public school and Catholic school, I started. And that's how I really got involved in education.
Right.
And let me tell you, you can teach on a shoestring and those kids still learn. So it's there, you do need money and you do need to pay your teachers. But there are some things that if you had a teacher who was worth her salt in the front of the classroom to impart knowledge the way that those kids needed it. There's a lot of things you don't need and I think there is a lot of waste.
No.
You know, and that's why I'm like, let's audit, find out where the waste is so we can put the money into programs. If you're telling me you're cutting art, you're cutting art? You know, that's that may be somebody's passion, you know?
You know, when when you first gave me that answer about about an audit, I actually liked that answer and I haven't heard that before.
Oh.
Honestly, by by any candidate.
Okay.
And that's great. And now you said that, you know, you can be on a shoestring budget and kids will still learn. And I'm gonna give you an example. You know, you're you're Cuban. I'm from Ecuador. And in our countries, we don't have the luxuries in school that we have here. And I can tell you firsthand, in Ecuador, we definitely don't have the luxuries. And there, I think that some of the students there actually excel more in math and in reading than in our country that we have in, and meaning our country, United States.
Right.
That we have a lot more. And I've never understood that. Because if you see a lot of, where do the United States poach talent from other countries?
Right.
From India, from China, from Venezuela, all these other countries, instead of poaching it from here. And sometimes you guys are white.
I just read somewhere the income, the average household income from from immigrant families and it listed it by ethnicity. India was the top. So they're spending whatever they have on their child's education because they know it's gonna pay off.
Yeah.
Cubans were not on the list. I was very offended by this, but we were not. But, yeah, so those, or, you know, those countries, they're putting their money into education. And, you know, we have a great standard of living here. We have a wonderful standard of living. So perhaps it doesn't need to, we don't need to be spending on some things, but we can be spending it on what's important.
No, I mean, and the important thing is our children because at the end of the day, those are our future. Those are our next politicians, our next engineers, our next doctors.
My next geriatric specialist, okay? I need a doctor.
So, you know, we we need to start investing in our children, not not in some of these other wastes of spending that that
Right.
That I do see a lot of. You know, you're absolutely correct. You know, it, I mean, I don't even want to say about the spending because I mean, that's one of the things that always gets me. Because I know, I could mention so many things that I'm gonna get people in trouble. I'm gonna get in trouble for it. So we're gonna leave it at there, but yeah. So what else would you like to do? What else, like, what is your passion when you want to get there? One of the things that you say, you know what? You know, I can do this on my own. I don't need the whole, you know, the entire board to do it because I know I know it's something that that everybody's gonna want.
Well, one of the things I'd like to do is, there are people in the community, you're an electrician. How would you feel about having an apprentice? I mean, I know you have your son now. Sorry, your son.
No, 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 no.
But what about if we had collaborative, you know, efforts with with local community and our students? Where where we would have apprentices for for everything, air conditioner, you know, electricians, plumbers. We, I think that that's, that would be something that would be easy to begin because, you know, we, let's get a round table together.
No, and and it gives the the students a chance or, you know, the young adults that are coming up a chance to see what they would like. Because, you know, you know, the two students, one said wanted to be a YouTuber or a fireman. And the young lady said she wanted to be an attorney. But that's now, you know, we know when we were young, we wanted to be so many things, you know, that
Oh, yeah.
I I want to be a lawyer, a math teacher, an architect, and I'm none of those.
Right.
I'm an electrician. So we change.
Yeah.
But, you know, if we give, if we give them a taste of what's out there, you know, then they can decide and and and, and look, I love what I do.
Right.
You know, I'm privileged and honored to 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 love the work I do, you know, being an electrician, watching, you know, buildings go up and then me powering it up to see lights come on. You know, that's, I I enjoy that. So I love what I do.
Right.
But I've talked to a lot of people that they're not happy with what they do and I don't understand why they're still doing that. So maybe we allow them to test the waters before they actually go out there and what's better than when they're young, when they can absorb stuff faster.
Right, and not only that, what we have to teach them is critical thinking, like you're saying, because if you know how to learn, you can learn anything, right? But first, we have to give you those skills to teach you how to learn. And and then they can do whatever they want and life expectancy is long. You could not decide you're gonna go to college until you're forty and still have a whole career, you know?
One thing I do, I did want to broach on is the parents' right to act or parents' rights. I know that, you know, the the state kind of, they're interfering with where the where the parents should choose what was more appropriate for their children. And I do believe that, I think, at the end of the day, it is the parents because the ones that are responsible and liable for the children are the parents.
Yes.
So, you know, I know that there's something that the state has gotten involved in. How do you feel about, you know, having the state, you know, kind of, but, you know, meddle in what was best for your children?
Well, I think, actually, I think it's liberated parents because, remember, and you know this because you have kids, parents are a child's first teacher. Okay, so we've already started that process. And why all of the sudden is control abdicated to strangers? And there are wonderful teachers, but you don't want to abdicate control or or what goes on with your kids to somebody who, you know, you don't know, you know best. The parent knows best. There are, there are processes in place for where the parent doesn't know what's best for a child. And unfortunately, that does exist. I was a guardian ad litem for a while.
So was I.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about, okay? But the parent does know best and I don't, I I think just the opposite. The state, the county, does not know what's best for your child. You do.
Right.
So you make those choices. And I think what's hap, through parent choice, you have been set free to make those choices. So if you want your kid to go to a Catholic school and that's your choice, well, you have paid your taxes as well. So that money goes with that child. I'm not saying, you know, you have to get in or whatever the the rules are for that and and the tests or whatever. But I think what has happened is parents have been empowered. And I've always been, I have no problem with charter schools because I think if you're good, you will bring people into you. And I'm not afraid of competition and we have to say, why are parents looking at charter schools and others? Why? What are we not doing for them that they're trying to go elsewhere? So maybe we need some self-reflection and examination to find out, what is it that this other school is giving you that you want to take the kid away that we are not doing for you? We we can do it too. So I think we need to be competitive. We need to be thinking more about, you know, what what can we bring to the table to attract these children? Clearly, getting rid of art and and other programs and music is not going to attract anybody to our schools. So we have to think about that.
Well, I mean, and and that's the one thing that we are not gonna agree on is charter schools. I I would be okay with them if they were under the school board umbrella and they're not. You know, I had my youngest at the end, and I'm going to a charter school and nightmares, I hated it. So I'm not a fan of charter school because of that.
It might not be for, you know, that might not have been the right fit, but at least you had the choice to try, you know? And that's all I think. You have the choice. You you, that's a right that you have to to choose for your child what you think is best. My two girls, I have, I have two girls. One went to Catholic High School and the other went to Palmetto High. Those were choices that I made because that's what they needed. The younger one. Public schools have more advanced placement classes. That's just reality. So our, when our oldest went through school, they didn't, the Catholic school she went to, she took as many as she could. But there were still things she wanted to do. Our youngest got the sampling of everything she wanted. And that's, that's just, you know, one way of of showing, we can do that too, but we have to continue to do that. We have to continue to grow and put the right emphasis on what programs do we need to attract our children to come back to to school with us? What are we doing? Are we not, are we not maintaining these buildings well? What are, what's happening here? What, I don't know.
Right.
So let's find out.
No, no, yeah, we we definitely have to, well, it has been a pleasure, Haley. I mean, I I wish we had more time because I mean, we can go on and on, you know, and congratulations on you're gonna be a new grandparent.
Thank you very much. First time.
Yes, so to everyone out there, just, you know, if they wanted to get hold of you, please let them know how can they contact you?
Go on my website, votehalieross.com and you can find me through my website.
Is there a phone number? We can call you that or no?
I don't know the phone number.
Okay.
It's on, it's on the flyer. It's on the flyer.
Okay, and and I like the way it says, our kids need parents, not politicians.
I don't. I've never run for anything. This is a first. I don't, I've never run for anything. This is a first, so.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Haley, it has been a pleasure. Thank you for coming on. Um, everyone, um, stay safe. I'll see you next week. Um, I believe I want to have another school member, but for a different district, come on next week. Um, so see you then. Johnny Farias signing out.